Chairman Brown, we now call this meeting to order.
All right. And then later on in the agenda, you'll see we'll have Ms. Dallas James, AKA the mayor of Jordan Hill, will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So at this time, our next thing, Mr. Superintendent, will you please give us the roll call?
Mr. Chair, good evening, everyone. I will start with the ladies to my right with District Five, Sue McDonald.
Present.
District Three, Barbara Jo Cook. Gentlemen to my left.
Hold up now.
I know that was District.
Yeah, you gave her three. Now let's get that straight.
Well, I'm enamored by this young lady here, so she threw me off my game.
Dallas, get your mic.
I'll let you slide. District Three, Zach Holmes.
District Three is Zachary Holmes. District Two is Barbara Jo Cook. See what I mean? It's something about Dallas James. Pardon me. Zachary Holmes.
Present.
Will Doss.
Present.
Arcentel Brown.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum. Everyone is present.
That's right, we now have a quorum. Our meeting is now set to start. We'll have our prayer by Mr. Doss of the Second. Our pledge will be led by Mayor Dallas James of Jordan Hill Elementary School.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this evening. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for Griffin Spalding County. Lord, in every resident, every student, every teacher and employee, Lord, we ask Father Lord that you pour out your blessings. Lord, we're so grateful and thankful tonight, Lord, for the recognition of those that are being inducted to the Hall of Fame. We ask Father Lord that you continue, Father Lord, blessing them in every form and fashion. Lord, we thank you for the business of this meeting, and we pray for your wisdom and direction and all that we say and do. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic that was said, my nation of the God, indivisible, and almighty and justice for all.
Yeah! Next up, Spalding County Griffin Spotlight, Mr. Brown.
All right, we are here today to celebrate Jordan Hill Elementary School. And before we get started, we are going to read a... No, you can stay right there, brother. Stay right there. We're gonna read a spotlight on why they were chosen as our school spotlight. Jordan Hill Elementary, how many scholars? Three hundred and seventy-four. What is your school mascot? Jaguars. How many Falcone and staff members work at your school? Sixty-three. A quote from the principal on why you love being the proud principal of the school. Over the last couple of years, lots of changes have occurred in our world that have affected our education system. It makes me proud to see how our scholars and staff have adjusted to the new normal and are taking things in stride. Getting back to the way things were may never be an option, but I know as we move forward, the resilience and flexibility of the scholars and staff at Jordan Hill Elementary School will continue to make a positive impact for years to come. The Hill will. What good things are going on at the school socially and educationally? One of the top five in the district in third grade ELA, fourth grade math, fifth grade ELA, math and science, as measured on the 2023 Georgia Milestone Assessment. Scored above in the district in ELA and math on the 2023 Georgia Milestones, double-digit gains. Give it up for our scholars right here. Certainly, that is something that we celebrate, double-digit gains in student Lexile levels in third grade from 2022 to 2023. So that is consistency there. Beginning leader in meet training and implementation to build student leaders and recipient of the banner of literacy from State School Superintendent, State Superintendent Richard Woods Office for growth in third grade Lexile on the Spring 2023 Georgia Milestone Assessment. Let's give it up for Jordan Hill Elementary. Here are some of the other amazing things that are going on at the school. Strong communication with families, students, and staff using various avenues. They have newsletters, videos, social media, school website, and we all love Class Doja. Various school events during the school year. Science Night, student-led conferences twice a year. Celebrate student growth and success with Math Celebrations, Gordon-Gillingham Celebrations, Student of the Month Breakfast, Jamming Jaguar for Positive Behavior and Jaguar Jog for Perfect Attendance. Consistent parent workshops at different times of the day and week on various topics throughout the year. Parents' Resource Center available for parents to check out materials to use with their child. And ongoing job-invest professional learning opportunities for staff. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, and children of all ages, let's give it up to our September School Spotlight, Jordan Hill Elementary School. It is in District Five, so I will ask Ms. McDonald to call up the great people from Jordan Hill and present the certificate.
Come on up Jaguars.
All right, our next item, Griffin Spalding County School System announcements. We're gonna take it over to our Vice Chair of the Second District, Mr. Will Doss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, tonight, we have Mathias Johnson, if you will begin making your way towards the podium there. Mathias is a twelfth grader at Griffin High School. He is also a Griffin High School Bears baseball team member and takes the AP and honors classes there. Mathias is planning on majoring in engineering in college, and his first choice is gonna be Georgia Southern and possibly Alabama State, Kennesaw State. So, Mathias, thank you for being here tonight. If you will present our announcements.
Appreciate it. Chairman Brown, members of the board, and Superintendent Simmons, my name is Mathias Johnson, and I'm a senior at Griffin High School. First, I would like to thank the Board of Education for involving scholars such as myself in the district and the policy and legislative process. The announcements for the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting are as follows. Today, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, is National IT Professionals Day. Friday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, is a full remote at-home learning day. Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, is the Griffin Spalding High School Literacy Night from four-thirty to six-thirty PM. Thursday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, is the Griffin Spalding Elementary Schools Literacy Night from four-thirty to six-thirty PM. Friday, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, is the Griffin Spalding Partners of Education Fundraiser Golf Tournament from eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM at City Park, at Griffin City Park, address eight-twenty-one Pimento Avenue, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two-two-four. Saturday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at two PM, is the Griffin versus Spalding Football Game at Memorial Stadium. Monday, October second, twenty twenty-three, is School Custodians Appreciation Day. And Tuesday, October third, twenty twenty-three, is a Board of Education Boardwork Session here at two-sixteen South Street, South Sixth Street, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two-two-four at four PM. Governors, team, cabinet members, and stakeholders, this commends the Board of Education announcements for Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you so much. That concludes my report. All right, thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair, for that. All right, we're moving to our next item, the adoption of the agenda. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this item, the adoption of the agenda?
A motion that we accept the agenda as presented unless there are any corrections or addition.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Leader Holmes of the Third, seconded by Mr. Doss of the Second. When your name is called, please vote. District One, yes. District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four? District Five?
Yes.
Five-zero. Agenda is adopted. Now we'll go to recognitions by Ms. McDonald of the Fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. First up, we have Ms. Goodman to present the GSCS Summer Reading Challenge participants.
Good evening, distinguished board members and Superintendent Simmons. As we know, the GSCS Literacy Plan, Reading Improvement for Student Excellence focuses on early reading skills, foundational reading skills, and disciplinary literacy skills. The GSCS Summer Reading Challenge, Rise to the Challenge, afforded students the opportunity to be rewarded for reading at least twenty minutes a day or two hours each week from May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, through July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. We are proud to share that twenty-four students read more than three hundred fifty hours this summer. So today, we would like to recognize the scholars that are here for making a part, for making reading a part of their summer break. Each scholar will receive an ice cream voucher and certificate. Scholars, as I call your name, please make your way to the backdrop so that you can receive your voucher and certificate. Kennedy Roberts from Cowan Road Elementary. Jaylee Barnes from Moreland Road Elementary. Alexis Pritz from Moreland Road Elementary. Aubriella Ivy, also from Moreland Road Elementary. Lilian Hamby from Oars Elementary. Jackson Hamby from Oars Elementary. Leo Pierce from Oars Elementary. Rashi Jaswal from Cowan Road Middle School. Lily Kate Murray from Rehoveth Road Middle School. And Kimmy Lester from Griffin High School. Congratulations, scholars.
All right, next we have Mr. Adam Pugh to... We are gonna honor our twenty twenty-three Educator Hall of Famers. Mr. Pugh?
Great job, summer readers, and also want to acknowledge Partner in Education Dairy Queen for all those ice cream coupons. We appreciate that as well. So this is why everyone's here this evening. And board, if you wanna relax for a minute, we've got four bios, or if you wanna stand, it's your preference, but we'll call each inductee into the Hall of Fame up. They'll get their trophy from the superintendent. They can then have a seat and sit their trophy down. At the end, we'll call everyone up for a group photo. That way, everybody can rest easy. Thank you, everyone, for being here. This is a great event to fill up the boardroom, and it's a great, great, great honor. We're so pleased to be able to induct four people into our Hall of Fame. In April, GSCS sought nominations of exemplary educators who made outstanding and significant contributions to students, staff, parents, and the community during their employment at Griffin Spalding County School System. All nominees must have been employed at GSCS for a minimum of ten years and must have been retired for at least five years. This evening, we're excited to honor and recognize our twenty twenty-three Griffin Spalding County Educator Hall of Fame inductees. Karen Goodman, Johnny Goodrum, June Lyle, and Robin Samples will represent the eleventh class of Educator Hall of Fame inductees. Give them a round of applause. So we'll recognize each one. I'd like to begin by recognizing Ms. Karen Goodman. Karen Goodman taught third and fourth grade in Griffin Spalding County Schools for twenty-seven years. She served at Moore Elementary for seven years and Beaverbrook Elementary for twenty years. She started the Learning Enhancement, LEC, program, which was designed to help students who were having trouble staying on task in their classrooms. LEC gave kids classroom instruction and counseling. Ms. Goodman was also the chair of the SACS Accreditation Committee. She helped write curriculum, served as lead teacher for her grade level, and was the Challenge Twenty-four Math Competition Team Advisor. Ms. Goodman was a disciplinarian that had very clear classroom expectations. She insisted that students participate and try in her classroom. Hundreds of students benefited from her leadership, and I am one of those. Ms. Goodman is my favorite teacher. She was my fourth-grade teacher and is one of the more influential people in my life. So it's an honor to call her forward at this time. Thank you, and congratulations, Karen Goodman. Let's give her a round of applause. So all of the inductees were pinned before tonight's meeting. They received their pin as a Hall of Fame member, and they're also each receiving a trophy from Superintendent Keith Simmons, Dr. Keith Simmons. Next, I'd like to honor Mr. Johnny Goodrum. Johnny Goodrum, fondly known as Coach, spent thirty-seven years in education, teaching and inspiring students to achieve their dreams, whether in business, athletics, or education. Thirty-one of his thirty-seven years was in the Griffin Spalding County School System. Coach is a product of GSCS, being a nineteen fifty-one graduate of Fairmont High School. After serving in the United States Air Force, he received a Bachelor of Science degree in education from Fort Valley State University. He later received his Master of Education degree from Georgia State University. He began his career in education at Jones County High School as a physical education instructor and coach. Six years later, he moved back to his hometown of Griffin and continued his career in education as a physical education instructor and coach at his alma mater, Fairmont High School. During his tenure, he coached the Fairmont Bears to a state championship in baseball. In nineteen seventy, the school system integrated, and Coach Goodrum became the first black assistant principal at Griffin High School. He also coached track and football, winning mid-state, regional, state, and regional championships in track and field. During the trials of integration, Coach Goodrum was instrumental in calming students and staff during racial unrest. He became a resource and ally for all students, as he became known as a man of integrity and morals for the benefit of all students. In nineteen seventy-eight, he became the principal at Spalding Junior High, Unit Two, where he remained until his retirement in nineteen ninety-five. After his retirement, he remained active in the community, serving on several boards and committees to improve the living conditions in Griffin. Coach Goodrum could not be here this evening. His niece, Winomia Goodrum-Person, will accept his award for him. Please come forward and receive your trophy. The next inductee is Ms. June Lyle. June Lyle served Griffin Spalding County School System for thirty-two years. She began her teaching career in nineteen forty-nine at age eighteen at Oars Elementary. She also served Fourth Ward Elementary and worked as a Title One Reading Supervisor at Jackson Road Elementary and Atkinson Elementary. She spent twenty of her years as a first-grade teacher at Crescent Elementary. Lyle was named Teacher of the Year for the nineteen eighty-eighty-one school year, a star teacher in nineteen ninety-one. She developed innovative early reading and math curriculum units and strove, and strived to differentiate instruction to meet the needs of all abilities of students in her classroom. She not only put her whole heart into serving her students, but also in growing and building the capacity of new teachers and sharing her expertise and passion for education. She served... She served as a master teacher and trained 12 teacher interns through both Tifft College and Mercer University. Lyle retired in 1987. After her retirement, she continued to serve as a mentor and supporter to elementary teachers. She also spent countless days and hours volunteering at Crescent Elementary and Futural Road Elementary, where her grandchildren attend school. She continues helping a new generation of young learners with their sight words, vocabulary, and building confidence with reading aloud. She continues to enjoy her love of reading and sharing the joy of reading with the Crescent Retired Teachers Book Club. Thank you and congratulations to June Lyle. Let's give her a round of applause. Next, I'd like to recognize Hall of Fame inductee, Robin Samples. Robin Samples taught within Griffins Spalding County Schools for 29 years at three different schools. She spent 19 years at Beaverbrook Elementary School, seven years at Oars Elementary School, and she spent her final three at Cowan Road Middle School. During her teaching career, she was named a Teacher of the Year for Beaverbrook and Cowan Road Middle School. Samples earned her gifted certification and her Master's Degree in Education to further her skills as a teacher. Robin believes each child is worth teaching, no matter the struggle. Her big goal was to make a personal connection with her students to build trust. She made it a point to know her students and who they wanted to be, so she could help them live the lives they wanted to live. In addition to her teaching duties, she served on a technology team, which led her to implementing technology learning classrooms at her school. She served on two SACS committees, textbook committees, and leadership teams. She held leadership positions with multiple committees, including Relay for Life, 4H, and Academic Team. She also chaperoned many field trips and regularly attended students' ballgames, plays, dances, and so on. Now retired, Samples continues to serve the community with volunteer and charity work through Griffin First United Methodist Church and Alpha Delta Kappa Organization for Retired Women Educators. Thank you and congratulations to Robin Samples. Let's give her a round of applause. All four of these inductees have made outstanding and significant contributions to the students, staff, and parents of Griffins Spalding County Schools. Their dedication and service to the students of this community has made a lasting impression. We are proud to induct Karen Goodman, Johnny Goodrum, June Lyle, and Robin Samples into the Griffins Spalding County Schools Educator Hall of Fame. Let's give them one more loud round of applause. And now, if the Board and Superintendent would make their way over to the photo backdrop with the four inductees, we'll take a group photo of the four. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lily Goodrum, Coach Goodrum's wife. So families, thank you again for being here. These photos will be shared on our Griffins Spalding County School District's social media, Facebook, Instagram. There will be a press release sent to the newspaper tomorrow, so they'll all appear in the Griffin Daily News. They're also going to be featured on a couple of billboards around town as the new class of inductees into the Hall of Fame. This is the best part of my job, is telling good news and recognizing folks that are deserving. And so it's been a pleasure to honor you guys. Thank you again so much for being here at this meeting. And to our inductees, thank you so much for your impact in Griffins Spalding County.
Again, congra... On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to all of the 2023 inductees of the Teacher Hall of Fame. We greatly appreciate your years of service. Adam, calculating all their years of service, how many years do we have?
A bunch.
A bunch. All right, 21 savage, a lot.
Close to 100. It's gotta be close to 100.
Close to 100. We greatly... Again, we just appreciate you and your many years of service to the scholars of this school district. All right, we're next up is public comments. There are some rules for public comments. Let me see. Hundred and nineteen... Hundred and nineteen years, awesome. We do have one resident who is scheduled for public, signed up for public comments. Here are the guidelines for public comments. Any individual deciding to speak is requested to give his or her name, address, and the group of any that he or she is presenting. The speaker is expected to address the Board, not the audience. The presentation should be as brief as possible, yet should include all information considered important by the speaker. Unless an extension of time is granted, each speaker shall not exceed three minutes. Questions, suggestions, proposal, or criticisms, which have been presented verbally, should also be submitted when practical in writing and should be signed by the individual or spokesperson of the group appearing before the Board. Persons appearing before the Board is reminded as a point of information that members of the Board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. No profane, vulgar language, or personal abuse against any person will be permitted. The Board vests its chairperson or any other presiding officer or authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who does not adhere to the above protocols. Our first person for public comments, Ms. Nancy Moore.
My name is Nancy Moore, residing at 131 Kennedy Road. My purpose for attending this meeting is to let the school board know the following. The new Griffins Spalding County Airport is to be located at Highway 155 directly across from Kennedy Road and near the Jackson Elementary School. At the present time, there is no money for Griffin to build this airport. On a visit to the state Capitol, the Lieutenant Governor, Burke Jones, said consideration could be considered for the state to buy us the airport. Right now, studies are being conducted by Georgia Transmission Corporation to survey the lands affected. These high-voltage lines will cross 155 two times, Kennedy Road one time, Sheehan Road once. These lines will be H-shaped, 100 feet wide, 80 to 120 feet height. My Kennedy Road neighbors and I object to the above-ground lines. We signed a petition and sent it to Georgia Transmission Corporation saying so, and we asked for comparison figures for above and below-ground lines. The letter received said it was way more expensive underground. The airport director said underground covers 3,500 feet, above-ground approximately 15 miles. I've written to Senator Ossoff for federal infrastructure assistance twice. They have responded. I brought the maps for the school board to see how very close these lines will be to the Jackson Road Elementary School and their playgrounds. They will be at the back of recreation fields at Kennedy Road School. These lines are 115 kilovolts. 1,000 volts makes a kilovolt. I was given two public-use booklets by Georgia Transmission Corporation. The first booklet dated 2012 states electric and magnetic fields, which are associated with transmission lines, surround us every day. The second booklet, revised in January 2023, left out which are associated with transmission lines. The second booklet had a new paragraph added saying that they work with communities in locating transmission lines prior to construction, even making adjustments where necessary. I state these facts for anyone who did not know the situation. I believe in letting the left hand know what the right hand is doing. I appreciate your time, and if the school board has knowledge of these facts, I thank them. I feel they have our children's education and welfare in every decision they decide upon. I have the name of the airport director, Mr. Robert Mo, with the telephone number. Mr. Dr. Randall Peters is chairman of the Airport Advisory Board, and I have my name, my telephone number. If you could...
Thank you. Adam, will you get that information from Ms. Moore, please? Continue, Ms. Moore. What were you saying?
You know, I just want the best for the children. They're gonna be so close to those playgrounds at Jackson Road School. They have two pipelines, two gas pipelines, Colonial Pipeline and the Atlanta Gas Lines. And then next, it will be these H-shaped transmission poles. They're gonna come over one little house on Pine Lee, come across, and they'll go by the school, they'll cut down across Mr. Willis's land, they'll clip an end portion of my land, and continue on across Dr. Hopkins's land, like I said, crossing Sheehan Road, too. It's gonna be about 15 miles. The airport director says 3,500 feet underground at the airport. They want that, but there's a big problem with money. That's why I wrote to Senator Ossoff, but I wanted y'all to see that. Okay, did you want to write this down? Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore, for your time and bringing this information to our attention. We greatly appreciate it. All right, we will take about a three-minute break to allow our guests to leave. Come on, Mr. Holmes. All right, it is now time for our consent agenda items. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for the consent agenda is presented.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Doss of the Second and seconded by Leader Holmes of the Third. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda? When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Five zero, consent agenda approved. Action items. Next up, Anderson Davis Consulting, Ms. Barbara Austin.
Good evening, Board Chairman Brown, Board of Education members, and our own Superintendent Dr. Simmons. I come before you to present the request from our Superintendent of Schools to enter into a contract with Anderson Davis Consulting to provide executive coaching to our district-level leaders focusing on strategies that create conditions to support the development and growth of a culture that models learning and problem-solving to achieve district and school goals. Also, for external professional learning sessions with district-level leaders focused on developing a shared vision for teaching and learning grounded in evidence to support principal and teacher growth. The proposed contract with Anderson Davis Consulting will not exceed $37,600 to be funded through our ARP-ESR3 funds. So again, it is recommended that the Griffin Spaulding County Board of Education approve this request to enter into a contract with Anderson Davis Consulting to provide executive leadership-level professional coaching and development at a cost not to exceed $37,600.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Ms. Austin. Board members, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions, comments, concerns at this time? Ms. McDonald, you're recognized.
Could I just get a little bit more information, maybe from Ms. Austin or the Superintendent, about this firm, please? And how it works, what they do? How long will it be, that type thing?
Thank you, Superintendent. So Ms. Anderson Davis is a contractor that provides coaching. She's come highly recommended throughout many school districts. It is for one year only throughout this school year, and that work is done at the district level with our district leadership. And it is exactly what it shares there. It essentially provides that executive leadership coaching. As we, as you see in our background, provide so much PL and PD and focus on ensuring that our teachers and school leaders are provided professional development. We wanted to make sure that our district-level leaders also received a level of leadership coaching that does align to the ARP-ESR3 intent and purpose of continuing to grow not only our schools, but our district leadership. She has worked across different states. She's also educated with many years behind her. She does have some credible testimonials and credentials, and that was the reason that we decided to go with...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
All right, are there any questions? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this item for Anderson Davis Consulting not to exceed 37,000? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Leader Holmes of the Third, seconded by the Dean of this Board, Ms. Barbara Jo Cook of the Fourth. There is no discussion at this time. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five zero is approved. Thank you so much. Next up, Dr. Bradley Thompson, Georgia K-12 Math Standard Student Reproducible Books. Reproducible books.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Board of Education, and Superintendent Simmons. I'm here to present an action memo for Georgia K-12 Mathematics Student Reproducible Books. Tonight, I'm asking for the Board to approve the use of ESR3 funds in an amount not to exceed $112,000 to support all mathematics classrooms with implementing Georgia K-12 Mathematics Standards. The 2023-2024 school year is our initial implementation year for Georgia K-12 Mathematics Standards. The Georgia Department of Education provided all necessary resources, which included student reproducibles that are directly aligned to our state learning plans. All students, if approved, would receive a printed and bound copy of the student reproducibles for all learning plans to support both the teacher and the student for access to grade-level work. It is recommended to approve the use of ESR3 funds in an amount not to exceed $112,000 to support all mathematics classrooms with implementing Georgia K-12 Mathematics Standards. Funds will be used to improve student performance in mathematics through printing and binding the student reproducibles found in the Georgia K-12 Mathematics Learning Plans.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the presentation from Dr. Bradley Thompson. Are there any questions at this time? Ms. McDonald, the Fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Dr. Thompson, good evening. If we, upon approval, how long will it take us to get this information to our students in our schools?
So it will be about a four-to-six week process for our students to have the reproducible books in their hands.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you. Hearing no other questions. Dr. Thompson, thank you so much. Now, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to Georgia K-12 Math Standard Student Reproducible Books not to exceed $112,000?
Motion to approve.
It has been moved by Ms. McDonald, the Fifth, seconded by Mr. Doss of the Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five zero, therefore approved.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Next up, fiscal year 2025 State Capitol Outlay Projects Application, Mr. Bruce Ballot.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Board members, and Dr. Simmons. Here tonight to come back for another presentation to offer up some opportunities to get some entitlement from the state. You may recall, last year, we were working on Future Road Elementary School, and we received funding for that. In Splash Six that we're currently working under, the next several projects all had entitlement funds available to those, so we put in the request to the State Department. That came back positive, and with that, they have basically come back with offering Kennedy Road Middle School, $815,353, Moreland Road Elementary School, $46,444, and Ann Street Elementary, $236,596. The majority of those funds take care of HVAC improvements and needs there at the school. There are a few other minor items, but with that, as we had talked about previously, we've had a number of cost escalations as well as other concerns with inflation and just with the cost of projects coming around. And so this will hopefully help to allow us to be able to proceed with those and have enough money to cover the funds. And so with that, we'd like to recommend that the Griffin Spaulding County Board of Education approve the application and certify the FY 2025 State Capitol Outlay Projects Application for Kennedy Road Middle Facility, Moreland Road Elementary School, and Ann Street Elementary School Facility, so we can return it to the Georgia Department of Education for incorporation and processing.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the presentation from Mr. Ballot for the fiscal year 2025 State Capitol Outlay Projects and Application. Are there any questions at this time? No questions? All right, we're ready to call for the vote. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. McDonald, the Fifth, seconded by Mr. Doss of the Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero, therefore approved. All right, Griffin High School Baseball Dugout Repairs, Mr. Bruce Ballot.
Yes, sir. So we've all heard since the storms in January, the things we've tried to overcome out at Griffin High School. One of those items are the issues around the baseball field. We had fairly extensive damage to the visitor dugout at Griffin High and some other more minor damage to the dugout at Griffin High. With that, we have, it was turned back over to us. We had a, one of the consultants that was working with the, or the contractor that was working with GSBA had been working on some of these projects, but then they were turned back over to us to finish up at the end of July. Since that time, we've gone out and received bids, reviewed the projects with several contractors, obtained bids. We did also have the assistance of some of the Booster Club parents at Griffin High School that worked with us on some of those, some of that pricing. From that, we've received pricing back from four contractors ranging from $21,270 to $48,000. What we have looked at, we had, had actual, the adjusters came back, the insurance adjuster, and they had an estimate in there of doing the work for $28,932.59. With that, we have a couple of the estimates that we received that fall within that, and so we're wanting to go ahead and recommend that the Griffin Spaulding County Board of Education approve a not-to-exceed price of $28,932.59 based on the adjuster's estimate to adequately refurbish the dugouts damaged by the storm at Griffin High School.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've heard the presentation from Mr. Ballot on the Griffin High School Baseball Dugout Repairs. Are there any questions at this time? Ms. McDonald, the Fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Ballot, good evening. I just want to be sure you said dugout, not just the one that lost its lid. I think the whole roof was off, as I recall. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So this does have to do with improvements for both, take care of the storm damage for both, as well as paint both of the dugouts, spruce them back up and get them both looking...
And you know, the picture that was sent to us recently by the parent, was that abnormal or was that pretty normal?
Well, that was a little more than sometimes. We had turned, had some rain that day, but we had also turned the sprinkler system on, and it was actually throwing water in there as well, so it was a little more than norm, but we are looking at that. That's not a part of, you know, what's being considered in this that has to do with the storm damage, but we are gonna take care of that and make sure that we get the drainage taken care of in that dugout.
Okay, because that was gonna be my next comment. There's really no reason to spend the funds to make these dugouts livable, so to speak, and then come back, you know, six weeks later and they're full of water again. So I just want to be sure that we're taking care of the, everything that needs to be taken care of while we're working on it.
That's the intention.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, hearing none. At this time, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the baseball dugout repairs for Griffin High School?
It's a move.
Second.
It's been moved by the Dean of this Board, Mrs. Barbara Jo Cook, and seconded by the Vice President of this Board, Mr. Will Doss of the Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero. Thank you so much.
All right, moving right along.
All right, now we're up to Memorial Stadium. Emergency lights, Mr. Bruce Ballot.
Excuse me, sir. We are now over to Memorial Stadium and have some needs over there as well. We did have an issue at the first of the, the first ballgame with the power going off, and as many people noticed at that time, some of our lights were out. We had already been working on the, these options for some time now. We actually had taken bids on this last year, and it was held off because, again, we do, did still have lights, and luckily, we did the other night. But the, but the situation is that currently now we have less than half of the emergency lights that are operational. Usually, when these get to a point that they start going out, more of them will go out. So we reached back out to the company. The lights that were put in there, the main field lights are Musco Lights provided by Musco Lighting, Sports Lighting. And so we had reached back out to them to get pricing to put new LED emergency lights out there that should give us more longevity and light up the field and the needs there in case of an emergency. So with that, they have a local representative that had installed the lights before, Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting, and so the quote actually came through them from Musco with the pricing, and so we have that back. And they are also, the same company, the lights at Griffin High School that we installed at there several years ago, they were also Musco Lights, and they still have some work based on the storm to take care of over there. So we were hoping to go ahead and do both of these at the same time. That would save us a little bit of money. So with that, it's recommended that the Griffin Spaulding Board of Education approve the quote from Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting Incorporated to replace the old fixtures with new Musco LED fixtures for a total price of $48,458.40. And these will be covered from the Splash Three funds, which was what we have, you know, the stadium funding still under.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've heard the presentation from Mr. Ballot on the emergency lights of, for Memorial Stadium. Are there any questions? Ms. McDonald, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Ballot, don't really have a question, just have a comment. The Musco lighting is incredible. That's what Sun City has out there for pickleball courts and tennis, and they're just incredible.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was really happy to see that that's the kind of lighting that you've recommended.
Well, they offer one of, as far as the main field lights, one of the best walkies in the, in the country.
Right. Right.
Not the world, but you know, those lights have, do have a 25-year warranty on the main lights, and they monitor them, so they know when they're, when they're out, and they'll send us a notice, and they take care of it.
I recall they're at Amakin', is that correct? At Amakin'?
Well, that's where the company that's, that's actually does the installations here. They're actually from up in, I think Nebraska or Wisconsin, somewhere up north, the main company headquarters.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so questions or your statement? Thank you so much for that, Ms. McDonnell. All right, what is the pleasure of this body for this particular item for emergency light?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been motion to approve by Ms. McDonnell of the fifth and seconded by Mr. Dosser the second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero, therefore approved. All right, Spalding High School, Central Georgia EMC, Mr. Bruce Ballot.
All right, so this was another interesting request, an opportunity that's come about. Not quite as controversial as the, what we're hearing about with the transmission lines. But Central Georgia EMC actually provides us with power for five of our school locations. In addition to that, they are currently underway with expanding a fiber network throughout Spalding County. So they, over there in the area around Spalding High School and Future Road, which they provide the power for, that is one of the areas that they need to place what they call a fiber hut. So it's a, it's a little concrete building that they bring the fibers into to make connections and stuff, and then distribute it back out to other areas. And so they had come to us a couple of months ago to, I went out and met with them, look at a couple of different locations, possibilities, and stuff that was out there, and to see if might consider allowing them this opportunity. It's not a very big footprint. We're talking about the little hut itself. I want to say it's about 10 by 10, but then the actual fence to go around it, to have access, to maintain it and so forth, will be 25 by 35 feet. So a relatively small area that they're considering. Basically, we'd need an easement, a right-of-way easement agreement for them to be able to place that there on our site. It would be right along Future Road, right up against our fence. So the lines, there's already some of their power lines that go on there. The fiber lines would, would come down and go into the fiber hut. And then, as we said, it would kind of be distributed from there. So I asked them, when we were talking about that, I said, okay, well, but, you know, what could we possibly gain from this? What's the opportunities? In some cases, they will say with other companies, when they do this, you know, they would work something out or you would give them a, give a little bit along the way for the time and stuff. But a lot of times, it's just a given, and again, power companies and stuff do have easement rights to be able to go in and do things and stuff, so they can kind of be forceful at times. But, but they were nice, and they said, well, what they would be willing to do, since they would come in to our athletic complex to access this, there's a drive that comes in there off of Future Road. It goes right along the east side of the track field, between the track and one of the practice fields, and it goes around to the little maintenance barn that we have out there and right beside the concession. So they said that they would improve that drive all the way around to the maintenance barn to give us better access and maintainability of that drive. They also will put a, a light, security light out there beside their area to keep the area illuminated. And in addition to that, on our schools, and Mr. Harper has more details about this because we, and some of you were on the board when we did the fiber project and stuff. It is quite expensive, you know, when we originally got the fiber connections to the school buildings. So, but what they offered was that any school that they actually provide power to, they will run a, a line, one fiber line, to our main distribution frame inside of the building there, to all those buildings. If we want to use it, fine, and we can work out something with that, but at least it'll be there as a backup if we have issues or need something else. And in addition to that, that for any school system employee that Central Georgia provides power to, they would also provide that service connection for the fiber free of charge to any of our employees. And when we were talking about that previously, you know, the, one time they had talked about, could we get them a list of employees and stuff? But again, that was something that we really didn't want to try to get involved with, or we missed somebody or something. So I went back and talked to them and asked them, would you go along with, if we do this and it's approved, that if they're a school system employee that, and they're, you're already providing them power, then they could contact you to get that, and then they would just tell you they were a school system employee or you could give us something, a little code or something they could use to do that. And they said that will be fine, where we wouldn't have to be actually involved with that process. So in general, it sounds like a pretty good opportunity. It doesn't cost us anything. It's only taking up a small little area there that'll be out of the way. So we felt like it'd be a good way to work with Central Georgia EMC. They also provide us with some, some funding throughout, you know, every year. We get money back from the EMCs. They give us a check back every year, so there are other benefits there as well. And so with that, we'd like to recommend that Griffin Spalding Board of Education approve the right-of-way easement and allow Central Georgia EMC to install the South Griffin Fiber Hut and fence at the preferred location at Spalding High School.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? I think we already took care of that. All right, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this item? All right, motion by Ms. McDonnell of the fifth and seconded by Leader Holmes of the third. When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Five zero, approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballot.
Presentations and discussions. August Monthly Financial Report, Mr. Byron Moneybag Yo Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask Bruce, if you just want to stay up here with me, will I let you do this right quick? Good evening, board. Good to see you again. This first page of our monthly financial report is, again, for the second month of the fiscal year. These reserve balances, which is our bottom two yellow numbers, are unaudited. We're actually almost done with our field work for our audit for the fiscal year, so we'll have updated balances here in the next month or so. So $39.5 million for fund balance on general fund, approximately $3.1 million right now in nutrition, two months into the year. Page two is our general fund operating statement. Again, our top yellows are revenues. Those are typically lower in the months of July and August. We have some entries we have to make from the Department of Education that lowers those revenues. So we do have a deficit for the current year of 3.9, but that was anticipated. That'll self-correct as our taxes begin to get collected later in the year. Page three is our special revenue funds. Again, our top yellows until our, our zeros for revenue right now because we have until October 1st to get our consolidated application grant budgets approved at the state. So pre-K, you'll see, we've got some receipts there that we get earlier in the year, and then the hospital authority, we get a monthly deposit from them. Everything at the bottom is, is expenses that we're using our reserve fund right now to fund, out of the general fund until those revenues are received. Again, that's normal. Page four is our nutrition operating statement for the current month. Again, $864,000 in receipts, $402,000 in expenditures for a plus amount of $462,000 at the current point of this year. Page five is our fiduciary statement. $59.1 million is what we're currently managing. The top left number, $29.7 million on the left is general fund that we invest at the state at a 5.36% interest rate, which is really outstanding. Where we were about a year, year and a half ago, it was under a percent. So we do that again strategically, and we'll draw down on that. Bottom left white number, $19.3 million is the balance in the Splosh Six account right now. And page six is our monthly Splosh collections. You'll see $1.2 million, the first deposit for year four. Again, that is awesome. I don't know if you all read the news the other day. Governor Kemp suspended the gas tax again. Not sure when that'll stop, but that may impact that number just a little bit. But again, that's just awesome, $1.2 million a month. I think that budget originally for our guy here was $750,000 or so in the last election. So, Mr. Chairman, that completes my report.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Jones for his August Monthly Financial Report?
I have a question.
All right, Leader Holmes, you're recognized.
Couple of questions, just for my information. Oh, I, I see, you know, we just did this Georgia K-12 Math Standard Reproducible Books, and I see that we drew down from the ESER funds. What, what's the status on where we are with ESER funds, three, ESER three funds?
All right, so this is the last year of the ESER funds. They'll expire September of 2024.
September, okay.
And that will be, Ms. Austin, that's correct, right, September 2024. So we do a monthly drawdown on those expenses. So to just give you a number, 20 million spent on 32 right now is an estimate. So we're actually meeting to reappropriate the remaining amount for this year, and then I think Ms. Austin submits something by October 1st for the current year on that ESER spending.
And, and I had another question. I, I, I sent it to, and I apologize for asking, asking this in, in, in an open meeting because I had this, I sent a question to the superintendent. But I think it's relevant at this point about what we talked about with the meals at the schools, what's going on with the funding, where, so Mr. Wheeler can be able to do that. We, we had, we had obligated ourselves that we were going to provide meals, pre-game meals and snacks or whatever for our student athletes. And upon my asking how it was going, no one had been using it. So I was trying to ascertain why, why we were not doing it when we had said that we were going to do it. And when I asked the question, got an answer that Mr. Wheeler was saying the money that were allocated or was supposed to go toward doing that wasn't coming to him. So I, I don't know if you're familiar or not, or recollect.
Now, and Robert, you may need to come up and speak to that. But my only recollection is Mr. Wheeler reached out to my office to see how simple the process could be. We set him up with a credit card with a limit for American Express to be able to make quick purchases at the farmer's market. So that process has been set up. That's been my only involvement in that.
Mr. Wheeler?
So I, I, that's what I can speak to at this time. That process has been completed.
Where we are with that, there's not a limited amount of restricted funds that I have to work with with that catering fund, the way we had that money set apart. Me not knowing exactly what the balance is, I don't know what kind of, how much leeway I have as far as spending. I don't want to get in a position where I'm spending on a joint card that's tied to, the money is, if it's tied to more than $15,000 is what we started off with. We use that funds for trainings and all those things. So I need a more accurate balance so I'll know what resources I have to start that process. True, that card is there. One of the things that we have to be extremely careful with, that I've talked to Mr. Jones about, is banking out of a joint system like that. Because I can't, well, want to keep, we want to track that more closely. There's a non-program revenue fund that I have to keep a record of. So it's, we just got this first statement in August. I kind of have an idea. We're getting training, my bookkeeper's getting trained, so we can better understand the financial parts of it. It just was a little more confusing for me to start purchasing using funds that are not, like obligated. Like when we spend money, it's spent based on a grant, or it's spent based on you got a bid for it. But when we're doing this process, that's going to be open, and so there's, there's limited funds there. So that's what I need a better clarity understanding of that.
He, you and Mr. Wheeler?
We can, we can, we can do it offline, but I don't think I need to be involved. I think it needs to be set up between Mr. Jones. I'm not, I'm not at the school setting this up.
I guess to provide just more clarity as to what it is.
Well, 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 I think that we, we, we've gone through that. We've gone through that. It was brought to us that we would be able to tap into a program where we could feed our student athletes. So it, that part has already been done. It's just the money is not there for us to do it for whatever reason. And these coaches wasn't expecting that money.
Got it.
Right. I mean, expecting those meals.
All right, so we will get with Mr. Wheeler and the CFO and the superintendent's office will get together and work that out. Appreciate it. All right, next up on the agenda is Archway Partnership, Dr. Keith Simmons and Vice Chairman Will Dosser.
Go ahead. So we, our plan is every month to have this kind of update on the, on this once-a-month agenda. We have hired, or actually Archway has hired Shanisa Ashford as our new Archway professional. So we're excited for that. She was introduced to us this past first Wednesday of this month. She is, our plan, if everybody is good with it, is for her to come before us next month. She, Archway is bringing her up to speed. She'll have, I was in another meeting for Achieving Prosperity. So Archway is continuing to move forward on the five topic areas that have to do with the strategic plan. They are housing, achieving prosperity, economic development, education, and safety and security. If I'm not, I think those are, those areas, if they aren't the exact words. Something that's different this time is we are assigning Archway Executive Committee members and any board members of the three boards that are interested in being a part of those work groups. So any of those five areas, if you are interested in sitting on one of those work groups, we would like for you to. It allows you to kind of see what all is happening within the community in that work group, and it also allows the elected official to weigh in and to give some input in that area. I am currently myself sitting on the Arch, or the Achieving Prosperity work group, and I know Dr. Simmons is on the education aspect of it. You can duplicate if there's, if you have interest, we will make sure that you, we've actually decided that all of the minutes and things that are being sent to the Archway Executive Committee are also going to begin now being sent to you. Not that you have to do anything with it, but it's just information so that you have it on a regular basis. So we're excited for that. I think Shanisa's background, she was actually, I think, most recently at Emory Healthcare Area. She has been into the communications manager and different things like that. She was a part of, I don't know if you remember way back when, when they changed the exit numbers on I-75. She was part of the people that helped to get that word out to the state, why those exit numbers changed and those different things. So she was with DOT for a period of time also. So I think she's going to be great for our community.
When is the deadline for board members to send in which subcommittees they would like to work on?
I would need that by the first Wednesday in October.
Mr. Dosser, what are the five?
There's housing, achieving prosperity, economic development, education, and safety, security, public safety.
Put me down for economic development.
Okay. Awesome. And you can just text me or email me later if you want to think about it. That concludes. Doc Simmons, do you have anything?
Do you have anything you want to add to Archway?
No, sir. Just for those may want to hear me say though, no, thank you.
All right, leads us to our next section of the agenda. Information items, K-12 Elevate Construction Renovation Progress Summary number 289, and Monthly Facilities Maintenance Report for August of 2023. Are there any board member comments? We'll start to my left with Leader Holmes.
I just, I just reflecting back on the educators that was inducted into our Hall of Fame. And I guess I'm aging myself because, because each one of them kind of laid hands on me as far as being an educator for, for my tenure in the school system. But I just, I just heard so many. But I ju- I just heard so many wonderful comments, uh, on on those four that were inducted. And and you can see, uh, by the response, they brought multiple family members and they were just joyful, uh, for this to happen to their, to their loved ones. So I I just think, um, you know, we need to, well, I don't, don't want to say we, uh, we, we, uh, whoever, whoever, uh, nominates needs to do a deeper dive because comments that I've heard is that we've overlooked, you know, some prior educators, longtime educators, and I don't know how we can rectify that. We can't, we can't do everybody. Maybe we can, well, is there a limit, uh, Adam, that we do every year? What's the limit, the number?
I don't know that there is a limit. It's as long, as long as they meet the qualifications, when they're nominated, um, they're considered.
Okay, okay.
Is it the school that's, the school is not doing the nominating, it's individuals that are doing it?
Community.
Community, yeah.
I think that's important for the community to know.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but, but just wanted to give our, give, give the system kudos and Adam, uh, department kudos for, uh, what he do to, uh, get all these, uh, inductees ready and go through the information. So we just want to thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, no problem at all, Leader Holmes. Uh, Mr. Dos of the second, you're recognized for coming in.
No comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, District one, there are no comments. Uh, let's go to Ms. McDonald of the fifth.
I just wanted to say thank you to our IT professionals, Lonnie Harper and his group. Um, without IT, um, that board wouldn't be on and people wouldn't be able to see what we do here. Um, thank you, Lonnie, and your group for keeping our schools up and running with regards to IT. And secondly, Adam, you and Laura, thank you so much for the program you put together tonight to honor our four te- past teachers that went into the Hall of Fame. What an honor. This is one of my favorite meetings of the year to honor our, some of our best and brightest former employees. And and to me, that just, just does your heart good to be able to meet them and see them. So thank you, Adam. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
No problem at all. All right, to the dean of this board, uh, my human Emily Post, Ms. Cook.
I want to thank, uh, our superintendent, the staff, the administrators, the teachers, the students for a great first semester. I mean, it has been an amazing start with these students. I have to give a shout out to Crescent Elementary. Amy, I was there last week for Grandparents' Day. And to see the spark in the eyes of all of these students never gets old. It is so exciting to see that. So I congratulate all of you. Tonight was almost like going to church with the recognition of these outstanding educators in our school system. It really doesn't get much better than that. I could look out in the audience and see tears in a lot of eyes. A lot of you can relate to so many of these honorees in this system. What a great legacy they're all leaving. And as a former president of Southern Crescent Town and Co. College, Dr. Randall Peters used to say, if that doesn't light your fire, your wood's wet.
Apostle, we appreciate that word.
It's true. I forgot, I forgot one thing.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, if y'all didn't know, the Falcons are two and oh. Rise up.
All right, so Mrs. Cook, thank you so much for for those board member comments. Uh, at this time, we are not scheduled for executive session. We are ready for adjournment. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Mr. Dos of the second, seconded by Leader Holmes of the third. When your district is called, please vote. District one, yes. Two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? We are adjourned.
All right, good meeting, good meeting, good meeting. Good meeting.
Oh, that opens the door for me.
Woo!